Thank you for joining us. Once again, I would like to point out that our rules of procedure have been modified recently so that the public will be given two separate opportunities to address council. In the first public speaking section of the agenda, the public will be invited to speak for up to three minutes total to address postponed, regular business, consent agenda, or study items, or any other item on the agenda as permitted under the Open Meetings Act. Then after agenda items have been addressed by the council, the public will be invited to speak for up to three minutes to address any topic not on the agenda, as also permitted under the Open Meetings Act. All members of the public who wish to address the council will have to sign up to speak within 30 minutes before or within 15 minutes after the start of the meeting. Please provide your name and residency status, Troy resident, non-resident, or Troy business owner. Please also identify each agenda item number that you wish to address. So I'd encourage you to sign up now if you haven't already done so, as we will be shutting down the kiosk at approximately 7:45, of course, giving some latitude for understanding these new rules of procedure. We hope that these new rules will allow council an opportunity to process the business of the city more effectively, and we certainly hope that you'll agree that these rules are preferable. We'll begin this evening with an invocation given by Pastor David Lomasny from the Zion Christian Church, which will be followed by a pledge of allegiance to the state, to the flag of the United States of America. Please join me in standing. Welcome.
Thank you. I first must say it's an honor for me to be here tonight. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for the many blessings and freedoms that we enjoy here in the United States. This great city where so many live, raise their families, work, and enjoy recreation. I ask tonight your blessings on every council member and the mayor, that they would work in harmony with the citizens and city departments. I ask your blessings on every city employee, especially those in uniforms, serving our community, on the fire department and the police departments. I ask for safety on and off the job for them and protection from all evildoers. Help them to protect the citizens of this great city. I ask your blessings on the citizens of Troy, that they would know peace and safety. I ask your blessings on the companies and the community service organizations that function here in Troy, that your blessing would be upon them, Lord, that they would prosper, Lord, and know prosperity, that their employees would know prosperity. As this meeting opens, I ask for wisdom for each council member, that they would make wise decisions regarding the issues at hand, and honor their duty to serve the citizens of this community and everything they say and do here tonight. And I ask these things in the name of your Son, Jesus, to whom every knee will bow and every tongue confess, that he is Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. The October 8th, 2012 Troy City Council meeting is now called to order. Roll call, please, Mrs. Bitner.
Mayor Daniels?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Here.
Councilmember Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Form present. There are no certificates of recognition or special presentations, and there are no carryover items. We do have a public hearing for the conditional rezoning application for the proposed Troy Plaza development located at 5500 New King Street. Mr. Culpepper, is there anyone here to make a presentation?
Yes, here's. Mr. Brett Sevedant?
Good evening, Mr. Sevedant.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. For those of you who have not had the pleasure of meeting this gentleman, I'd like to introduce you to Richard Carlisle of Carlisle-Wortman Associates Incorporated, our planning consultants. Mr. Carlisle will be here this evening to answer any questions that you may have on the conditional rezoning process in general or the application in particular. First, I'd like to start off with a very, very brief primer on conditional rezoning for those of you who aren't real familiar with it. As you all know, a zoning ordinance regulates land use and development in a community. The Michigan Zoning Enabling Act gives Michigan, excuse me, municipalities the authority to adopt and administer zoning ordinances. The act also gives municipalities the authority to amend zoning ordinance text and zoning ordinance maps. If you amend a zoning ordinance map, it's called a rezoning, for those of you who didn't really connect the dots on that. Prior to 2005, municipalities were prohibited by law to place conditions on rezoning applications. For example, a community could not say to an applicant, "We'll rezon you provided that you don't develop retail on the property," or "You don't put a drive-through on the property." That was illegal. The municipality could take action on the rezoning, and if the rezoning was approved, all uses permitted within the zoning district were permitted as regulated by the zoning ordinance. Then along came 2005. The act was amended, and it gave municipalities the authority to place conditions on rezonings. However, and this is really important, if conditions were placed on rezonings, they had to be voluntarily offered by the applicant. Very important. Which brings us to this application this evening. It's proposed Troy Plaza development located on the west side of Crooks, north side of New King at 5500 New King. And it's not changing? Uh huh. It's called a glitch, Madam Mayor. I want to state for the record, I was here and tested this at 3 o'clock. It worked, so I tried. Please bear with me, I apologize.
It happens. Easy to fix it. There we go.
There it goes. It's cooperative, it's just really, really slow. Yeah, pointer works. So here's the site. This site here, 5500 New King, Crooks Road, Owens North-South. This is corporate, and this is New King. It's presently zoned PUD, planned due development. And the applicant is before us this evening, seeking a rezoning from this classification PUD to CB Community Business and OM Office Mixed Use. I would note that the application is divided into two parts. Phase 1 and Phase 2. This is a zoning map of the entire property, and to the right is a zoomed up, zoomed in map. Notice the dividing line here with my pointer. The front edge is CB, and that's to the east. The property here to the west is OM. And proposed uses for the CB component or the Phase 1 component, you see here on this rendered, color rendered site plan, to the north is a McDonald's restaurant with drive-through. The middle portion is mixed-use, two-story office and retail with the drive-through component on the southern part of the building. And then the southern portion here is a standalone restaurant. The dividing line is roughly here. And the OM portion here, you see in a future Phase 2, this is to be a hotel or an office building. The conditions volunteered by the applicant include the following. First, a preliminary site plan. A site plan in and of itself are a series of conditions, basically showing how the site is to be laid out. The first two buildings of Phase 1, or the front portion, the CB portion, will be developed within six months of obtaining building permits. The future restaurant building of Phase 1, which is this one here to the south, will not be marketed to a bank, a chain drugstore, or any other vehicular intensive uses. The details of that future restaurant building and pads shall be subject to Planning Department review and approval. Phase 2 of the development, which is to the rear, the OM portion, will only be marketed as either an office building or a hotel as presented on the site plan. And finally, prior to the development of Phase 2, the developer shall provide the city with a traffic and parking study analysis to ensure that it's going to park and it's going to flow well, mix well with the neighborhood. The master plan classifies this property as being within the Northfield classification. This classification calls for office and research uses as primary uses. It also considers commercial uses to support the surrounding workers and the surrounding activities. The Planning Commission considered this item at a number of Planning Commission meetings. They held a public hearing on this item, July 10th, 2012, and they recommended approval of the item. In terms of findings, city management finds that the rezoning application is consistent with the city of Troy master plan. The proposed zoning districts are compatible with adjacent zoning districts and adjacent uses. The commercial uses will provide food and service opportunities for workers in the Northfield area and increase marketability for adjacent office uses. And finally, the conditions volunteered by the applicant reduce potential impacts of the proposed rezoning on adjacent properties. And with that, Madam Mayor, city management recommends approval of the conditional rezoning application.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Mayor Proton?
I had a quick question about the timeline. I know that it was in the materials that the development of the first two buildings of Phase 1 would be within six months, and that those two buildings would be the McDonald's, and then the second building would be the two-story retail office mixed use, correct?
Correct.
And then after that, there's the freestanding restaurant, but that's also still considered Phase 1, correct?
That's correct.
And then the hotel office building? Do we have any idea on a timeline for either of those, just in general terms?
I'm not aware. The applicant is here this evening, perhaps you could answer that. I know that based on conversations with the applicant, they've got leases for the first two. That's why they're a lot more confident and are willing to commit to the six months. My understanding is they've had conversations with the latter portion of Phase 1 and the hotel/office, but again, that's really something that the petitioner could possibly answer.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Public hearing is now open. We have two persons who have signed up to speak. Richard Peters, resident. Mr. Peters?
I thought this was another project I'll play.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is Tom Gergich. Hello, sir.
Good evening. My name's Tom Gergich. I'm the area real estate manager for McDonald's in Michigan, and I'm just here tonight to answer any questions that anyone might have and to support the applicant, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Did you have a timeline that you might be able to offer to Mayor Proton McGinnis?
I can tell you that McDonald's typically builds within 90 to 120 days of obtaining building permits, and once the project receives site plan approval, we'll move forward with our building plans and get those submitted, so.
The other restaurant, is there any timeline?
I'll let the developer and applicant address that part of it, but McDonald's is ready, willing, and able, so.
Okay. The developer hasn't signed up to speak, but if you'd like to come up and address the question, that would certainly be welcome.
I think everyone's learning the rules. I went out there, and she said I didn't need to sign up because I was actually the petitioner.
Okay.
Okay. So my name's Mike Gordon. I'm representing the owner tonight. I'm the architect for Moise Gordon Associates, and we're in Royal Oak. First of all, I just want to thank everyone here. The staff has been wonderful to work with. As far as the timeline, we started working on this project six years ago, so it's been a long in coming, and we feel that the development has evolved to something that we're all going to look forward to, that it's going to be a catalyst for the area and bring much-needed amenities and help in the redevelopment of some of the adjoining parcels. So we're looking forward to moving forward. As far as the timeframe, build it may well come. We've now received a lot of interest once we got past certain approval points, and now with McDonald's on board and the majority of the other building leased out, the activity on the corner lot, but as these things do take time. I'm hoping, and from a business standpoint, I'm looking forward to, and I've mentioned, that actually what may happen is we may be back with the hotel first. We've got a lot of interest in that, and it may be a mixed-use style building also. So as far as the timeframe, I can't give you a definitive, but I've been in active conversations a lot more in the last six months, so.
Okay, good.
And if there's any other question, I'd be happy to answer it.
No other questions. Thank you very much. Public hearing is now closed. We could bring the item to the table for resolution. Would someone like to bring the resolution forward, please? Councilman Fleming?
Mayor, I will move the resolution as printed for approval.
Second?
Support.
Moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Mayor Proton McGinnis. Discussion, please. A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner?
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. We now move to...
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Teetz?
At this point, I'd like to suspend the rules to postpone the study session that was scheduled for this evening, to move it to the November 12th meeting.
Is there a second on that?
Second. Second.
Second. Councilman Teetz moved forward the waiving of the rules of procedure?
Yep.
A vote, please, and seconded by Councilman Campbell. A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes. So we're waiving the rules of procedure, and now we're going to vote on whether or not we want to postpone the study session?
There'd need to be a move and a second to move to postpone it.
Councilman Teetz?
I'll postpone the study session to the meeting scheduled on November 12th.
May I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Teetz, seconded by Councilman Campbell. Discussion? Mayor Proton McGinnis?
I have a question. I don't have an issue with postponing it, but I was wondering if there was a specific reason or if something came up or we were waiting on additional information.
I'd like to look into it a little bit farther, so. Additional information.
Any other discussion points? A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner?
I have a follow-up question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I wasn't sure if we have representatives from the police department that were here to present this evening or not.
Yes. We do have representatives here, but they would be very happy to come back again.
Okay. Well, thank you. Councilman Slater?
I don't have any problem postponing either for that reason. I think it's an important issue, and if any of us are not prepared to discuss it tonight, I'm all in favor of postponing.
A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll postpone the study agenda item until the 12th of November. We'll now proceed to public comments for agenda items only. No one has signed up for any of the items, so we'll move then to... Well, we don't have any response to public comments because there hasn't been any public comments, so we will move to the regular business being as there's no postponed items either. There are no mayoral appointments and no council appointments. There are mayoral nominations to the Downtown Development Authority, and I'm still working on my final recommendation. I'll have my nominations ready for the next regularly scheduled meeting to be held on October 22nd, 2012. There are no city council nominations, no requests for closed session, so we move to consent agenda items. Are there any items that need to be removed for discussion, council? Could someone please move the resolution forward on all the consent agenda items?
Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry. Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby approves all item consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Proton McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Fleming. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Under memorandums, we have an announcement of a public hearing to be held on October 22nd, 2012 concerning the 2013 application for the Community Development Block Grant in the approximate amount of $145,204 to fund eligible projects. I wonder, Mr. Culpepper, when council might get information packets regarding this issue? It'd be good if we could have something presented to us prior to the full agenda packet for the next meeting.
Okay. Madam Mayor, you're calling for additional information prior to the packet, is what you said.
If I can get something possibly by next Friday, that would be an opportunity for us to learn more about that.
This is fairly simple. It's been going on for years and years, so we'll be able to put something together for all of you very soon.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. There are no submitted future council agenda items, so next on the agenda is the public comments for items not on the agenda. The audience should be aware that all comments are to be directed to the council table rather than to city administration or back to the audience. Also, there's a timer on the city council table in front of the mayor's chair that turns yellow when there's one minute of speaker time left and turns red when the speaker's time is up. In order to make the meeting more orderly and out of respect, please do not clap during the meeting, and please do not use expletives or make derogatory or disparaging comments about any one person or group. If you do so, there may be immediate consequences, including having the microphone turned off, being asked to leave the meeting, and/or the deletion of speaker comments for any rebroadcast of the meeting. Speakers should also be careful to avoid saying anything that would subject them to future civil liability, such as slander or defamation. Please avoid these consequences and voluntarily assist us in maintaining the decorum befitting this great city. First on the lineup is Wanda Monroe. She's a resident of Troy. Wanda?
Good evening. Hello, everyone. First, I want to say to Daniels, Mayor Daniels, I voted for you, and I'm praying for wisdom and strength through these difficult times of attacks. As a woman and a leader of the city, I'm proud of you. And Councilman Henderson and Councilman Teetz, I also voted for you on 2011. I'm a resident of Troy for six years. I've been watching these council meetings on and off. It's very frustrating, to say the least, of many people coming, wasting time and complaining and attacking our mayor instead of talking of issues on hand. Before I continue, I want to say to Mr. Henderson and Mr. Teetz, I'm bothered by some of your lack of support to our mayor, and I want to bring that forward. Council Fleming, I've always considered you a wild card, especially when you voted for the transit authority, which was very disappointing. However, I want to say to Mr. Teetz, I really like you, but I trust you will come together with our mayor in support in some of the issues that have come forward. And I know you and I have similar interests, and I believe in you, and I believe that you will do what is right for our city and our people. I want to also state a few facts. Now, in learning of the conditions of what you just read to us, this was meant to be stated clearly, and I hope I'm not removed for this reason, but I want you to hear this. Lastly, the media of the city is a joke. They don't know how to report their news. They love to create it, sensationalize it, twist any little truth they possibly have. They have replaced, they should be replaced with the real reporters who want to actually report truth. But knowing this isn't going to happen, I want to say this. Regardless where you stand, and our mayor, she deserves respect and attack, and her personally is senseless and irrelevant. Why don't you speak of the great things? I'm done. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Ron Butterbaugh. He's a resident of Troy. Good evening, Mr. Butterbaugh.
Thank you for the opportunity. You talk about why I joined the massive 9,000-plus citizen movement to recall Mayor Janice Daniels. My beliefs can be summarized into two issues. First, she has repeatedly shown disrespect for people different than her. It doesn't matter if the differences are based upon city issues, religion, politics, race, sexual orientation, or any number of other things. Nothing in her background, and certainly nothing in the definition of her role as mayor, gives her the skills or the right to do this. It is not her right to shove her belief system down the throats of either our children or us, or to tell us how to live our lives, or what to do in our homes, or what to do in our cars. Second, she has consistently demonstrated a lack of knowledge about the finances of our city. She is clueless about municipal financing or fund accounting and is unable to understand the differences between actual budgeted and estimated expenditures. I would like to read a brief transcript from the September 27th League of Women Voters meeting where Janice Daniels participated in a Q&amp;A session. The question, "You wrote a letter last year referencing a huge slush fund in the city and also implying there was a lot of loose spending. What is this slush fund? Have you identified it? Have you taken any action to eliminate it?" The mayor's answer, "I think we have a healthy fund balance. I'm not a financial manager. I don't run the finance department. I think there is some room to study a little bit more. It is a huge undertaking." Question, again in reference to the slush fund, "You specifically stated that there was not enough money there to fund, there was enough money there to fund five libraries. That cannot be factual." The mayor's response, "That was probably a hyperbolic statement." Question, "Have you identified any savings or taken any actions? If so, what are they?" The mayor's response, "I'm still looking. The process is overwhelming. Over one weekend, I was given a 365-page budget that I was supposed to be able to analyze and interpret to make decisions from. That's the best I can offer. I'm sorry, but that is not good enough. Calling her own statements hyperbolic does not make it okay. They were designed to deceive and misrepresent. The budget study sessions were not over one weekend. They extended over three weeks, and frankly, she had five months to prepare. She offered no ideas or suggestions to reduce cost. Her silence during eight hours of budget study sessions was deafening. Mayor Daniels and her team are dangerous to our city's future. State officials have called Janice Daniels xenophobic, and now Janice herself admits to hyperbolic distortions."
Thank you.
Thank you. I just asked for the vote to recall Janice Daniels.
Next on the agenda is Cynthia Wischer. Wischer. Thank you. Good evening, Mrs. Wischer.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all tonight. I'm just so proud that you guys all show up at every meeting. It's so refreshing. For a long time, we didn't have that. Now, what brought me here tonight is the little la-de-dah that is announced every night, that you don't use expletives or derogatory or disparaging comments about any person or group, or there may be consequences. What I'd like to know, who determines the consequences? Does the council individually or together decide when somebody has been out of line, or is it up to Mayor Daniels? I figured it might be Mayor Daniels, because a lot of very derogatory remarks have been made about people that no longer live here and have no way to correct these remarks, which really upsets me, because, number one, it's not fair, and it's not nice. We gotta get nice. And these statements have been made repeatedly by a gentleman, pardon me, he's not a gentleman, who starts out praising you. He's entitled to his opinion, but he makes these derogatory remarks, or he ends his statement in these glowing remarks for you, which is fine. I just want to know. There's a lot of questions that have been asked. We only want an honest answer. Is that too much to ask from people whose lives depend on your decisions? All we want is a simple answer. Or like when we were in the citizens' roundtables a few years back. Went to a lot of them and ended up at the roundtable with a lot of the council people and other people, but it seemed like every time... But it seemed like every time my friend and I had a question for you or another gal, we didn't get an answer. You simply put your coat on and left the room. Never got an answer. All people are asking for, Mayor Daniels and council, if somebody has a question for you, please just be honest and answer it, and if you don't know, that's okay, too. That way, we can all maybe get together and figure out what's going on, and things can smoothly transition. But I think the majority of people out here, all they want are some simple answers to questions. And if somebody asks me a question and I don't know, lots of times I have to tell them, no, I don't know, but I sure do look into it, and I try and get back to people.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next on the list is James Savage. Good evening, Mr. Savage.
Good evening, Mayor Daniels. Good evening, members of the council. I have looked at the new ballot for the November election, and it seems a very lengthy and confusing ballot. The most important issue on the ballot to me is the recall petition. Now, I have made my opinion and the reasons for my opinion known very clearly on just about every item on this ballot. During the last 10 months, we have heard many opinions, some of them over and over again. But what we haven't heard is the opinions of our elected leaders, the council members. The recall proposal is the last item on the back of the ballot. I meant to bring one in so I could put it on TV so people could find it. And is of the utmost importance to Troy voters. Mayor Daniels, since she took office, has spoken in a very clear voice on all the items on the ballot and all the issues facing this city. She has stated her opinions and the reasons for her opinions on the Transit Center, the budget, freedom of speech, wasteful government spending, and the performance of the then-city manager, John Zellag. When Mayor Daniels took over, my opinion was that she seemed a little inexperienced. But now, I'm amazed at the improvement of how, I thought only like teenagers could pick things up as fast as she has, and she has picked it up. I guess at one point, I offered to take the chair for her. Mayor Daniels is just one of seven member council. We know where she stands on all these important issues. But where do the other council members stand? This is an important issue. This recall ballot is important, and we need to know where the rest of the council stand and why. We haven't heard this. So, I have my very good reasons. Anybody can question me why, but I will vote no on the recall election. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Peters? Mr. Peters?
Good evening, Mr. Peters.
Good evening, Mayor, council, folks, people of Troy. I just got a couple of things. Won't be very long tonight. The first thing was, I was listening to the debates in the economy that they were talking about, and personally, my own opinion is that I think that we should resist going back into Hoover-like notions to balance a budget in order to, I guess, placate interest groups. I think that, like Roosevelt found out in '34 and '35, that when they did that, that they went right back in there. Also, cutting aid to the auto industry, why I think they want to push it to the oil and gas, etc., I don't think that makes good sense either. Last week, I don't know if I'm wrong on this one or not, but in Troy, I thought on Waddles in '17, there was like a rezoning thing, and maybe you can clear me up on that one, where business was put in. But I would just say the general structure of our city, I would hope that we'd stick to the planning that we have for our city and that keep the residential and the commercial, you know, pretty much intact. I don't think we need really a store on every corner. And I personally think that values of communities, the strength of the community is in its people, and that that should be the major concern that we have here in a balanced approach to things. So those basically are it. I would hope that we invest in our country. We need to invest, not only in future energy, and people have to catch up with the technology that's out there right now. And I would hope that we grow about 1% or 2% and resist both right and far left for our country. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Next on the list is Sue Martin. Mrs. Martin? Good evening, Mrs. Martin.
Good evening. Before I begin my prepared remarks, I need to say, I've always said that you are doing the biggest share of the recall job for us with your actions. That you would read these rules and regulations into the record tonight, and then allow one of your supporters to sit and willfully slander members of the audience without cutting her off is ridiculous. I ask that her remarks be stricken from the record, as per your rules. Why I really came here tonight, though, is to express great dismay with the mailer that you sent out under your No Recall Committee depicting you as being in the biblical lions den. Not only is this very poorly-written mailing contain misleading facts, errors, and outright lies about the recall team and the overwhelmingly-successful petition campaign, it paints you as an innocent victim. Anyone who's been in this city since you've taken office, or seen the news reports, or heard you on record, knows it is utterly ridiculous to portray you as being unfairly criticized for your own words and actions that are on public record. But more than that, to allow yourself to be portrayed in the image of a sacred biblical story is akin to blasphemy. It goes too far. It is appalling that you or any one of your supporters would sanction that. And the analogy of you as the righteous victim at the hands of City Hall, as it's worded, creates a hostile work environment for all these people who have never been anything but diligent, respectful, and sincere in their efforts toward you and your job as the mayor. It's a striking reversal from your words at your State of the City remark just a few short weeks ago. The overwhelmingly-successful campaign to recall you has never been about who's more righteous. It's never been about creating and perpetuating this false war between Republicans and Democrats, left and right. It's never been about anyone's sour grapes that a conservative woman made it into office. There are plenty of conservative women, like me, who are on this recall effort. It's not about our politics. It's never been about any one of the countless other reasons you and your supporters offer up as a diversion from the real reason. The real and valid reasons for the recall are about removing you from office because you are unqualified to represent the rich and diverse community that Troy is. They are about making you recognize that your rhetoric is filled too much with the pronoun "I" and not enough with "we" or "us." You do not serve all the people of Troy. It's about saying no to a so-called leader who's more concerned with legislating everything else about our morality rather than what it is that you've been charged with. Over and over, you've shown a lack of regard for the rules and procedures, like you read tonight, details and facts, and simple compassion for your city residents. For these and many other reasons, you should resign. But because you willfully refuse to even acknowledge most of your missteps or take ownership for the damage they've caused, you will be recalled.
Thank you, Mrs. Martin. Next is Nick Chiracero. Good evening, Mr. Chiracero.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. I was sent this in an email written by a person in Troy. It's called "The Grinch Who Stole the Election." Now, the people down in Troy love Mayor Daniels a lot, but the Grinch who lived just south did not. Yes, the Grinch hated the mayor with all of his heart. He hated her mostly because she was smart. He hated her smile and hated her shoes. He also hated her because she spoke the truth. The Grinch was angry. Yes, it is true. I hate the mayor, but what can I do? The people have spoken. They've made their choice clear. They chose Mayor Daniels in their election year. Those silly people with their elections and laws, they just don't know what's best for themselves at all. Since the people are foolish, I must have a recall. "I know what I'll do," said the Grinch with a grin, and he thought up a plan of treachery and sin. "I'll create such a ruckus and racket you'll see, and the people of Troy will know, forget about me. I'll spread lies and untruths and slanders and fits. I'll show an awful fuss and scream just a bit. There'll be signs and commotions about nothing. I'll show these Troy people that I'm really something. I'll protest in march, and I'll talk to my Lou, and the people in Troyville will all cry boo hoo." When I'm sorry to say, the Grinch followed through with his plan. He went into Troyville and did the whole scam. There was bickering and drama and all kinds of clutter. You see, the Grinch, to the Grinch, truth just didn't matter. When election day came, the Grinch was pleased to say, surely I've led these people astray. Now we'll have the mayor of my own choosing, perhaps even me, if they are snoozing. The mayor won the election. The mayor who won the election must go for no other reason than because I said so. But when the votes were counted, the mayor had won. The Grinch couldn't believe it. He just stood there stunned. He said to himself, "But how can this be? Don't they know this is all about me? I don't understand why the people voted no to recall. Perhaps elections do mean something after all." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chiraceros. Gordon Shepke? Mr. Shepke?
My name's Gordon Shepke, 328 Paragon in Troy. I'm here tonight because I was going over one of the city's websites, and anyway, I'll read my script so I don't goof it up. I'm here tonight to thank you, Mayor Daniels, for your fiscal sanity and your staunch leadership in opposing the new expenditures, like the Troy Transit Center and additional tax increases, till the big picture of Troy's long-term financial future is sustainable with a workable plan in place to ensure its success. With financial instability that you inherited from the previous administration's leadership, previous city manager, and Miero appointments to the Downtown Development Authority, the city's long-term finances are in a mess. With peak numbers estimated of $14 million in principal and interest around five years down the road in the red, this debt is unconscionable. In my opinion, this reflects a lack of sound business practices, vision, lack of leadership, and reckless abandon. Coming before the council, I have been asking that this authority, the Downtown Development Authority, be reined in for years, defunded, or whatever the city charter allows to stop this financial bleeding. It isn't going to go away by itself. Thank you, Mayor Daniels, for your leadership, because it will take leadership and stability to rein and stop this bleeding. Off of the Downtown Development website, in 2013, will be $610,244 in the hole. 2014, 2015, $3,909,209. 2016 and 2017, $10,621,600,64 in the hole. The final year of 2017, 2018, $14,028,264. So, these are unreasonable numbers, and this is all due to a runaway aboard under our ex-city manager. We've got to stop this stuff. We can't afford these kind of things. This stuff is going to kill us. Someday, there's going to be accountability, and by golly, we've got to look at the overall picture before we start picking on little projects here and there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepke. Next is Ed Grechek. Mr. Grechek? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Daniels, council. Mayor Daniels, thanks for your great service to this city. Again, I mentioned last time I was here that we rated the 26th the best place in the country to live, and it's been under your leadership. Thank you, Mayor Daniels, in spite of these people. I can't believe that they continue this agenda that they have. And you're here to oversee what happens for the taxpayers, to watch and see what happens to our dollars, our tax dollars, and that's why we elected you, and that's what we want you to do, and you're doing a great job of that, Mayor Daniels. And these people here, I can't believe they can't just stop. They have a different agenda. I don't know if it's the big union talking that's happening in this country. It's all over this country, and we need someone to stop it, and you're the leader that needs to stop it for us. Thank you, Mayor Daniels. And I can't believe the venomous tone these people have. And yet, they talk about you and listen to them. And I'd also like to see, instead of a McDonald's over there, how about a Chick-fil-A on that corner? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dan Brake, resident. Mr. Brake?
Mr. Savage, I've known for some years.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me. Mr. Brake?
I don't know what happened over there. I missed that. Mr. Savage, I have known for years, but I have not spoken with him in weeks. I didn't come here tonight to speak about this, but because of some work I was doing earlier today, I happened to have this in my briefcase and pulled it out when this first lady spoke. If you take the half dozen petition circulators that she named, and you add to that the names of our former mayors, Gene Stein and Louise Schilling, plus failed former council candidate Bruce Bloomingdale and former council member Mary Kerwin, and add up the petition signatures, those 10 people turned in, you have 2,800 signatures, one-third of the total number of signatures required to drive this issue to the polls submitted by those 10 people. If there's any question about who's behind the movement, I think those 10 names answers it. What I did come here this evening to speak about is that this is the second anniversary of an infamous moment here in council history. Two years ago this month, this body, not all of you, but those who were present on the council at that point, had a meeting with the stated purpose of censuring Councilman Martin Hauerlag for having dared to speak his mind publicly on his position on the then-pending ballot question of a new special tax to fund our library. That meeting lasted eight minutes, so I never had the chance to speak there. In preparation for it, I had done some research, though. And one of the things I had learned is that there's an outstanding United States Supreme Court decision dating from the first half of the 1800s, where that court was asked to rule on exactly the question of an elected official speaking out on a ballot question. And the unanimous decision of that body at that time was that an elected official has not only the right to speak out, that body said the elected official has a duty to speak out on a public ballot question because their constituents have not only the right to understand where they stand to take that into account in their own ballot decision, but they also have the right to know where that official stands when they take their next election into account. That decision by the Supreme Court has never been questioned. Here we are today. I'm sorry. Let me belabor the point. I'm sure you understand what a duty is, but let me just say it. A duty is something where there's no question. It's the law. In fact, obeying the law is one of our duties. Paying our taxes is one of our duties. In my generation, one of our duties was answering that letter that said, "Greetings from your government serving in Vietnam."
I'm sorry, Mr. Brake. Your time is up.
So, your duty.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Your duty, all seven.
Thank you. Linda Kaima? She's a resident?
Good evening, Council. Ms. Daniels, I've tried vehemently over the last months to get clear and concise answers to claims and statements you've made. There's been adequate time for answers, yet you still avoid it. I've tried to give you an opportunity to show those leadership qualities you claim to have, but this too has come up empty. But now, you've even ignored my emails. Is that the way you want to treat those who you elected to serve? One of my questions that was mentioned early was regarding your statement that there was enough money to fund five libraries, and your reply was that it was a hyperbolic statement given by a private citizen before you ran for mayor. So, are we to believe that everything you said leading up to and during your campaign means nothing? You're not to be held by those prior beliefs and campaign statements? Are we to believe that what you said was just another means to the end, to get elected? I guess we'll never know the answers. I thought by now you'd have gauged what was expected of you in your role as mayor. It goes beyond your ideologies. It goes to listening to the masses, businesses, residents, resources, and weighing their opinions as a whole and acting accordingly to what is best for them and the city overall. That was not to be. You continue to act according to your sole opinion. You have said that, quote, "I just see the picture differently than you do and different than eighty thousand other valuable people residing in Troy do," end quote. So, what have you to show that you are, in fact, representing all citizens and not only your opinion? Ms. Daniels, you've misled the voters of Troy before and during your campaign and continue to do so. I gave you an opportunity to be straightforward by answering those questions and do what's right for the city and its eighty thousand residents. I hope that by now you'd have learned that there's more to being mayor than just using it as a stepping stone to push your agenda for political gain. Why should I or the rest of the residents feel you're there for us and serving us with transparency with your latest fiasco regarding your recall? In a recent mailing, you said you claimed to have the same values as citizens of Troy. Values? Really? My values include knowledge, professionalism, and integrity. Integrity, the quality of being honest and having strong moral principles. It's apparent from the mailing that's not the case. You'll probably claim you didn't approve the mail, or that's nothing new. Your group of supporters come week after week and spew the same rhetoric after learning they're incorrect. So, this is to be expected. What's ironic is that you actually approached me while gathering signatures and asked me, have you no shame? So, in fact, you feel you, if you feel you have integrity, then by all means, show it. Resign and spare the city even more of the shameless tactics as we have seen before and tonight that are to come from you and your supporters. And just a message to everyone here, the recall goes beyond John and Matt and the campaign group. It's the nine thousand-plus people that signed the petition.
That's it. Your time is up, Ms. Kaima.
Thank you.
That concludes our public comment section. There are no council referrals advanced, so we move to council comments.
I think, I think we need a response to the question of what are the consequences when you violate the rules? So, maybe I could refer to the city attorney. When there are, there have to be consequences when we violate the rules of order. Could you explain what those consequences could be, especially for somebody that comes to the mic? I think, I think we, no matter what side of the fence we're on, we have to not attack people and their names. So, could you explain what the consequences for that could be?
Madam Mayor, in the agenda pack, and one of the reasons why, why we have asked, and the mayor has read the statement in advance of the public comment portion, is it does set forth what some of those sanctions are. And it's possible that the, the person could be, had the microphone turned off, they could be asked to leave the meeting, or the deletion of speaker comments for any rebroadcast of the meeting. There's also potential civil liability for things such as slander and defamation that would be outside of, outside of this body. The chair is the one who runs the meetings, but all of the council members have the ability to intervene and to make a statement, and that can be done with two council members or the chair. And hopefully, that answers your question.
I could just follow up. I, I just think it's important that we don't, it's okay to attack me, and we can all take it up here, but you shouldn't attack individual citizens, okay? So, I'm going to ask that that portion of the speaker's comments be taken off of the rebroadcast, okay? And I think we should do that from now on. If you're going to mention somebody by name, that's inappropriate, okay? So, I'm going to ask that we take that off. I believe the city, city manager has that authority to do that, and if I'm mistaken, you can correct me, but I think he governs the rebroadcast.
Madam Mayor, it would probably make our city manager most comfortable if there were a motion that specifically identified the speaker and which comments you seek to have removed from the meeting, rebroadcast.
I can do that. I would ask that the, the comments of resident Wanda Monroe be stricken from the rebroadcast, and if we can, only the portion that mentions citizens by name, the comments that led up to that, I don't have a problem with, but I think we have to refrain from mentioning specific names. So, I'll move that.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
May?
Councilman Henderson?
I support that idea. You know, far too often, we, in the last two years especially, have gotten to a, to a point where it's okay to slam dunk the next guy or the last guy that spoke simply because he has a different idea, different opinion, or whatever. And we all have a variety of opinions. We're allowed that. This is a great country that we live in because of that. But certainly, you know, I don't think it's appropriate to have anybody's personal information, whatever that is, broadcast to the public that has the potential of bearing forth any kind of hazard or danger because somebody has chosen to speak up, regardless of the issue. So, I fully support that.
Councilman Teetz?
As a reminder to my fellow council members, any one of us can speak up during the comments and can certainly address the issue. And the silence from fellow city council members is just as loud as the silence from the mayor sometimes. And the fact is, I was trying to find the spot in the comments or the notes that are right at the beginning to be able to say something. But I think that should be clear to all of us up here, that just washing your hands of some comment and saying, oh, it was the mayor's fault, is a little bit, is a little bit hypocritical, because we all have the responsibility to say something, and I will certainly support this, because I don't think it's appropriate to criticize someone personally for something like that. That's the reason why I'll support it is over the criticism of the individual personally. But keeping in mind that folks are public figures when they take a political stance like that, and just like someone could criticize State Representative Nolenberg or such other people that are public figures, you accept certain responsibilities as public figure. So, I will certainly support this, because I don't think it's appropriate to say things against someone just over their character, but also, in the same way, I think we also need to realize that each of us bears a responsibility for speaking up when, when the conversation or when the dialogue's actually happening. So, very good.
I thought that this paragraph was created so that we wouldn't have expletives or really rude comments be made. I didn't hear anything really rude. The people that were mentioned all sign up to speak, so we announce their names every time they speak. I would certainly like to make sure that we do keep the decorum befitting this great city, but I didn't hear anything that rose to the level of removing the remarks from the rebroadcast.
I think when you bring the people's names into it, you create that right there. And, you know, my colleague here, he's absolutely right, we should have stepped in, but these people are not political animals out there. They may have political opinion. They're not elected officials. There's absolutely no reason whatsoever to bring anybody's public name up here at the voting, and it should have been stopped. I feel bad I didn't stop it. You should have stopped it. Dane should have stopped it. Anybody should have stopped it. That was absolute criticism, and it has no place in this chamber whatsoever. And if you don't see that there, it was a negative, I don't know what else to tell you. There was a lot of negative information.
There's a great deal of criticism that goes on in these chambers, week after week.
Well, not personally against people who are the taxpayers and citizens of the city. If they want to give it to us, that's fine. That's what we make the big money for. These people don't.
Excuse me, Mr. Savage, please, please don't shout out. Please don't shout out, please. Mr. Savage, please, thank you. Councilman Fleming?
Mayor, I think we could learn from this, because I agree, names have been used in these chambers before, and no one was censured for it. Shame on us, if that's the position we want to take. So, what I think we need to do, you know, when we look at our rules of procedure again for public comment, we need to strengthen that. If we don't want names to be called, we should spell it out. That is not in this procedure. If we want, it does not say inherently that you should not call someone's name, period. If that's what we want to do, then we should strengthen it. I don't disagree with it. Councilman Slater's pointing to a paragraph here, so I'll read it. It said, "In order to make the meeting more orderly and out of respect, please do not clap during the meeting. Please do not use explicitives or make derogatory or disparaging comments about any one person or group. If you do so, there may be immediate consequences." You can mention a person's name without being derogatory or disparaging, and people's names have been mentioned here in the past, and we didn't do anything about it. So, if we want to stop mentioning people's name, but although those people can come up here and mention their own name and say what they want, then we need to be clear. That's all I'm saying. I don't disagree with it. It may have gotten a little out of hand tonight, but there's nothing that I read, even looking at the paragraph that you point to, Mr. Councilman Slater, that says that we should have to do this. But I think it's, I don't disagree with it, but I think if we're going to make this a hard, fast rule, you don't mention names, then we need to spell it out, clear it in our, in our procedure here regarding public comment.
Would everyone suggest that I add a paragraph or a sentence in this paragraph that says, please don't use people's specific names in your comments in the future? At least start with that and then see where that takes us.
Councilman Fleming?
Mayor, I think to do that, because we voted on this specific language, we would have to revisit this, and maybe that's something the council so desires we should do, so that we just make sure this doesn't occur in the future. But again, there's nothing in this that says we should not, that we have to censure. But I think we'd have to vote on that, and we'd have to bring that up, and probably in the study session, just revisit this and see if there's anything we need to tighten up here. We can certainly do it tonight, but if we're going to make this oppressive, then we need to change the rules and make that very clear.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
We can tighten it up if we need to. I personally think that language is clear enough, and I do think that specific comments that called out citizens' names, not council people, tied to the, some descriptive word and the word losers probably rises to the level that it should be stricken from the meeting's replay. So, I would support a motion to do that tonight, and whether or not we want to add something more specific, I mean, I think, I think what we have is, should be clear enough, but I would leave it up to the discretion of council if we want to revisit the rules.
So, would someone like to bring up a resolution? Or do we need to waive the rules of procedure to, Mayor, you do have a motion on the table? Okay. So, we have to vote on it, and we're, okay, we are in discussion. Vote, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Any further council comments? Councilman Slater?
I just follow up. I, I should have said something. I almost said something, but I should have, and I, no matter what side of the fence from now on, if I, if I hear something, I, I'm going to say something. I think that's just all we need to do. I think the language is good enough here. I think we all know, and I should have said something tonight, and I didn't, but I will next time, no matter which side of the fence.
Any other comments? Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, I think it's appropriate, since three residents brought up the fact that council needs to stand in line with support of the recall or against the recall. For me personally, to, to just step out and, first off, addressing the first commentator, I don't know of anybody on this council that has had their teeth kicked in more in the last year for their support of the mayor than myself. So, I take offense to anybody that, that wants to step in line and say that I haven't done my part in supporting the mayor of Troy. And I, you know, I support the mayor on a number of fronts. One is her right to believe with her belief system the way she believes. And does that make her unfit to be the mayor of Troy? No, it does not make her unfit to be the mayor of Troy. And to that end, I am going to vote no on this recall, because she is, she is an elected official, and she deserves to be here for four years because she was elected, and let the recall happen. It's, it's a legal method of trying to remove somebody from office. I disagree that the reasons that they've slated here are caused to remove her from office. So, I'll firmly stand in line to say that in that regard, I support the mayor. And let the chips fall where they may. I'm in support of the mayor.
Councilman Teetz?
Before we go, a series of six different opinions about the recall, I just don't think it's appropriate to talk about that during a meeting. It's a, we're here to do business, and perhaps save your comments and thoughts till after, afterwards.
I just wanted to let anyone know who is in the audience that didn't get an opportunity to see the State of the City address. It is posted on the website, www.janiceformayor.com. Please visit the website and watch the State of the City address. Mr. Cole Pepper, I was also wondering if we could have management compile a list of distressed buildings in the city of Troy. We seem to have a huge amount of interest in businesses moving into Troy, so maybe management could identify the strengths and the weaknesses of these various buildings that we have around town, so that we might be able to more effectively market them at this key point in time. It's been brought to my attention a second time that the corner of Maple and Livernoy would be a perfect location for a movie theater. So, I wonder if council could have a feasibility report on the, the potential of that taking place.
It would be possible to list those buildings that would probably fit in that category. As far as the feasibility for the individual use, I think if we just simply state the existing zoning rather than speculating on, on uses, it'd be about as far as we would want to go with that, I think.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We move to reports now. There are, there are quite a number of very complimentary letters of appreciation. I have to say thank you to the Faith Apostolic Church for their civil servants appreciation ceremony given on Sunday, September the 30th, that literally brought me to tears. It was so beautiful. There's a letter written by Mr. Terrence Donnelly, who's the attorney for the Troy Downtown Development Authority, that quite clearly articulates the unprecedented and premature actions by council for the insurance guarantors actions by council for the insurance guarantors of the DDA bonds, that will give you a pretty good update as to where we are right now with that situation. There's also a notice of a public hearing on October twenty-third, where the Detroit Edison Company is requesting approval from the Michigan Public Service Commission of its uncollectible expense true-up mechanism computation for 2011. And I wonder if anyone actually goes to these meetings, and I'd be very interested to find out exactly what they talk about, what they represent. I want to see what's happening to the money that we all give to Detroit Edison. So, if you would like and you know about these meetings, please give me a call, (248) (524) 3500, extension one. Is there anyone else who has comments they would like to make?
Madam Mayor?
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Um, one is on '09, and I wasn't sure if Library Director Russ would be here tonight to give us any additional information about it. I know there was a brief report in here, and I wasn't sure if it warranted her staying here for the meeting, but if not, I at least wanted to point out the report that updates on the library's strategic planning process.
Okay. We don't have anybody here.
Yep. Library, Library Director and I discussed that I would be here and available to answer any questions related to the report.
Um, and I didn't have questions, per se, but I think it's important, and it's gonna include some community outreach coming up here shortly, so maybe if you wanted to just take a minute or so to explain what was gonna be going on and the way that citizens might be contacted to, to receive input, just so they're aware of what's going on. It sounds like there's gonna be two methods, and just to kind of give an update on the record here, so that people at home or watching replays of this would know that they may be contacted for this reason.
Yes, um, as council is aware, the library is going through a strategic planning process, and we're about to embark in a community survey. Our consultant, Aaron Gong, has received a email list of, and I forget the number of emails, if it's four thousand, which will, people, of interested people from Cindy Stewart at Community Affairs, interested people in the community, not necessarily people who are direct users of the library. Those will be sent directly to those email, um, addresses, and they will be able to then connect a link and play the survey. And there's a second portion of that, is that the survey will be advertised through the press and in mass marketing, not mass marketing, but in the press and in the public, so anyone else can go on and do the survey. And the survey is being done to add to the research that's occurred already, to understand, one, who are the users of the library, and what they like and what they don't like and what they would like to see. And then, of course, that information will be synthesized and come back in a full report to City Council in December approximately.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, there are, the study session has been postponed. There are no closed sessions, so at this point, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for joining us in the legislative process. Have a good evening, and we hope to see you all again soon. This meeting is adjourned.